I'd like to call this meeting of the Community and Economic Development Committee to order. Before we get started, I'd like to ask everyone to recognize a moment of silence for Flint City Council member Quincy Murphy, who we lost this past week, as well as for County Commissioner Marty Kuzinow, who lost his mother-in-law in the last week as well. So if we could have a moment of silence for them. All right, so can we have call to, we have call to order? Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Lloyd.
Present.
Commissioner Winfrey.
Here.
Commissioner Ellenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker. Commissioner Kuzinow. Commissioner Wayhill.
Here.
And Commissioner Davis.
Thank you. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there any public comment to the committee? Public comment going once? Going twice? Three times? No public comment. Do we have, we have communications. I think we have a report from Mr. Bradshaw. Come on down.
Before he starts, Commissioner Wayhill, would you like to introduce?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I was trying to figure out where to do this, since there's nothing that says introductions. Thank you, Mr. Freeman and Madam Chair. So I have with me today this young lady. Her name is Anna Heat, and she is an exchange student here in this community, attending Schwartz Creek High School. She is from Armenia, and she is here on a full-ride competitive scholarship. She's already graduated from high school in Armenia, but got a full-ride scholarship from her home country to come to the United States to take a look at what American culture looks like and build her leadership skills. As I said, she's at Schwartz Creek High School. She volunteers at the soup kitchen. Which, you're gonna be in sports in the new year?
Cheerleading and tennis.
Cheerleading and tennis, okay. And her sponsor is a staff member at the college or a faculty member where I work, and asked if I would be willing to bring her here, so she can experience the give-and-take of American government in action. Look how excited she is.
[laughter]
So Anna Heat, the only person you have to watch out for, that guy right there. So please welcome her, if you would. Give her a round of applause.
We are delighted to have you here, Anna, and please enjoy the meeting. All right, Mr. Bradshaw.
Thank you. So I want to talk about a transformational, exciting new project. It's called Our Housing Future. We've talked a lot in the past about housing, what do we do? We've worked as staff to come up with something that we think will make a definite impact into housing. So where does this come from? So in Genesee County Planning Commission, we have our countywide plan, right? One of the things we pride ourselves at Genesee County is, not only we do plans, but we implement plans, right? So this is one of those hard implementation part of our plans, right? The writing of the plan is probably the easy part, the implementation is the hard part. Currently, and I'll just, I know we all talk about housing and some of the needs, I'll just share some, just some stats from Genesee County. 1.6% vacancy rate, which in all intents and purposes is almost zero out there for a vacancy rate. Average cost of a house right now is just under $200,000, just at 199, 900. We're short 7,000 affordable housing units. We've talked to you in the past about some of the studies we've done that comes up with that number. We have 40,000 houses of need and repair. That's not demolition, that's just repair. How does that stack up between city of Flint and outside the city of Flint? It's about 21,000, 22,000 in the city, and about just under 20,000 outside the city. So these are houses that need roofs, windows, those type of things. Medium gross rent has been going up. Medium gross rent's about $1,000 a month. It is extremely common to be paying $1,300 or $1,400 a rent for an apartment, and upwards of $2,000 plus to rent a house. Those are just numbers today, which has been a 41% increase in the last 10 years. 50% of our renters are cost-burdened. That means they're really struggling. The landlord knows there's a shortage of housing, so we've seen rents have been continuing to rise throughout. So if you do a lease, year's up, oh, I'm gonna raise another $150 or $200 a month. That's pretty common. So we have people struggling with that. And then the other one that I think is very appropriate to Genesee County, over half of our houses were built in 1970. We're an older, more urban community. We're not a community that just grew in the last 10 or 15 years. And that's important when we get to what the implementation piece is. We talk about affordable, what is affordable housing? 30% of your gross income spent on housing costs. We're looking to target incomes up to 120% of area median income. I'll talk about what that means a little bit later. We're also talking about workforce housing. People in your community that have jobs, they need a place to live. Who needs affordable housing? Employers. We are starting to see things we haven't seen in the past, where hospitals, other people are actually trying to partner on housing opportunities, so that not only can they attract somebody here, but they have somewhere for them to live. We have not seen where employers were concerned about where to get housing for their employees. College grads. We have a lot of people that, from Genesee County, they go out, they get an education, Ann Arbor, Saginaw, all over the place. They want to come back to this area. We need a place for them that they want to come back to, a housing type that they're looking for. Employees. We, one of our benefits are, we are a crossroads I-69, 75. You can get just about anywhere in the county in under 20 minutes. If we don't have housing here, they're gonna go to Oakland County, Livingston County, which have seen extremely impressive growth rates for housing down there, Howell, Heartland, those type of areas. Because if we don't have it here, 15, 20 minutes, they're gonna go get it somewhere else. And then current residents. We do have an identified issue with homeless, homelessness, and we have issues with just our current residents. So there's, those are the four groups that really need some affordable housing. When we talk about affordable housing, what does that mean? We use terms of up to 120% of income. Trying to make it a little bit easier, these are actually Genesee County average salaries for professions in Genesee County. So on the very bottom, on the left, we have a fast-food crew member, average is about $27,000. On the far right is an accountant at $66,464. We have police, we have librarians, we have restaurant managers, mortgage underwriters, firefighters, police dispatchers. Those are the people that we need to have a place, so when your school hires a new teacher, we want them to have a home in their community that they can buy. There's a profession that left out. A civil engineer is 67,000, average. So that puts it in perspective. That's for a one-income person. If we're talking a family of four, it's about 97,000. So those are the people that are struggling to find housing in Genesee County. That ties in perfectly to the county's priorities. When you're talking about housing, that literally checks every single one of those boxes in there. And the key, the key part of this is, as a county, we're not here to build the housing, we're here to be the convener to bring the right partners together to do that housing, right? The developers, the banks, everybody, that's our role in this process. Program we're unveiling is a $12.8 million program. It's got two components, because nothing's as simple as just trying to do one thing. So we need additional housing. So on the one side, you've got a Housing Impact Fund, that's funded with $10 million, and that's for your developers, nonprofits to build new workforce housing. Those are new units. On the right-hand side, we have a Roof Revitalization Fund. We cannot forget the housing, the older housing stock we have. We have to keep that weather tight, we have to put roofs on those. And there's 2.8 million on that side of it. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the Roof Revitalization Fund. Exciting new program. This has caused us to rethink our entire process. Staff said, let's go after some money. So we partnered, so we're the grant administrator, we're partnering with Habitat, so in the city of Flint, Habitat's gonna do the projects outside the city of Flint, we're gonna do the projects. As a person, the part that's important, this is a program for Genesee County entirety, right? This is not a program for just one or the other. There's gonna be, there's one website, there's one phone number, right? So you don't have to worry if a resident said, well, who do I call? You call that one website, or one website, one phone number, and that will take you to wherever you need to go, a seamless process. Super excited, we got 1.7 million from MISTDA. We're gonna partner, that was 1.1 in matching funds. We're using some of our existing federal funds that we have, 2.8 million. Goal is 100 low-to-middle-income households in Genesee County. And those are, to be done extremely fast. So we've really re-thunk, re-imagined how we do our projects. So we're, how do we track new contractors, right? So we're gonna group those in groups of five. How do we get them through in a process that's fast enough, so that if we're just doing one or two houses, we're not gonna get there? Plus, we have our existing program already, so how do we look at this whole process? The other program is our Housing Impact Fund. So 10 million in gap financing. We're looking to leverage 90 million in private money, plus tax credit money. We're partnering with two partners on this. HUD, our federal government partners, are coming in with about $5 million. And more importantly, County Treasurer Deb Cherry's coming in with 5 million. This gives us the flexibility to do a lot of the projects that don't quite fit into the box that HUD has, right? So there's certain requirements we have to do with HUD. This allows us to be more innovative and get some other projects out there. We're looking at 500 new housing units there. I'll talk a little bit about what kind of houses we're talking about. So we're talking, we have different chunks of money. So we have anything from single-family, multifamily, new units for low-to-moderate income households. Remember when I said low to moderate? That's up to 66,000, 97,000 for a family of four. We have multifamily rentals for qualifying populations. So this is more people that are in danger of homelessness, or have homelessness issues, because that's an important segment we have to make sure we take care of. We have a missing middle, single-family, multifamily, new units. Missing middle means a couple things. Number one, it's an income base, right? So it's kind of a middle income, they're, they're just not quite making enough on one side. The other piece on the missing middle is housing types that we don't have currently in Genesee County. One of the things you'll look in here, these are not pictures from Genesee County. These are pictures from other places. We need to be doing housing to attract people to come to Genesee County. We have lots of single families, we have lots, but we don't have the housing types that some of our younger people are looking for. And the other thing that we're seeing dynamics, a lot of people don't have big, large families anymore, smaller families, they don't necessarily want to take care of a yard, those type of things. Unique and innovative projects. One of the things we wanted to make sure of, we needed some flexibility. If somebody has a great idea, whether it's retail, commercial, how do we do that that we haven't necessarily thought of? So we have a unique and innovative project category. Sum it all up, 1.2 million total investment. Housing Impact Fund is 500 units, about $100 million. And on the Roof Revitalization Fund, right, about 100 roofs, and about 2.8 million. Couple things that I'll just like to say, our goal is to supercharge the process. If it would take us, at our current pace, to get to this level, probably 10 to 15 years at best, right? And we really need to get there a lot sooner. With employment, people are making decisions about where to locate, we really have to have those options out there. The other thing I'll just say, the Planning Commission staff are amazing. So we have the most talented staff I've ever worked with, right? So we, this is a huge project for us. This is just existing staff. Chris Durgen led up from a project manager making this happen, Sheila Taylor, Anthony, Nicole, Lee, Renata, every single person in order to make this happen, really took a look at our existing processes. How do we truncate them? How do we make them fast, efficient? And without all of their skills, we wouldn't be here today. The last person I just want to recognize is Treasurer Deb Cherry. We approached her with this idea of, you know, when we looked at other places, what they were doing, how do we do something here? And without her support, we wouldn't be able to do the impact that we have today. Do you want to say a couple words?
Good evening. Thank you very much, and thank you, Derek. I just want to say that we're very, Carla and I met with Josh and Derek a while back to talk about this project, and they explained it to us. And the need, and through the land bank, we always see, and many of you who sit on the board, the need for housing throughout the community. And so it made a lot of sense to use delinquent tax funds, for the purpose for which it is intended, which is to help improve the housing stock within the community. So I'm very happy to do this, I'm glad to be a partner with this project, and I want to thank Derek and my staff for the work that they've done on making this happen. And Josh, too. Thank you very much, and I think Derek will probably answer any questions you got.
Thank you, Treasurer Cherry. Thank you, Derek. Yes, Commissioner Lloyd.
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the vision for this particular initiative, project, the work that's going into it, the presentation that's been gathered, and even getting it to a point where we can have some discussion about it and take some action. The truth is, residents all across this community are getting hammered, when it comes to particularly individuals who are not homeowners, who are some of our most economically challenged residents, or the most vulnerable, seniors and our youth. Because of the continuous rise in rental rates, I cannot tell you how often, I had a property that I sold on the west side, and I had put it online, put it on my Facebook page that I was selling it, and sold it. And the amount of messages I received as a result of that one posting, from people all across this community, looking for houses either for themselves, or for friends or relatives, it really makes you sad, because I oftentimes respond with, I'm not aware of any places. And you're talking about single mothers or single fathers with children, or seniors that are looking for spaces that are more accessible for them. And so certainly an issue. And then, when I think about those who want to stay, who would like to upgrade, have an upgraded property, or move into a nicer area, who have no options, or those who want to move into the community, but they don't want an old home built in the 70s, or back in the early 1900s, if you move over in Woodcroft Estates, or if you move into the cultural area. I mean, folks who may have money to buy a property, but don't have the money to take out walls, and update kitchens and bathrooms, and deal with asbestos, and those kinds of things, lead paint, and those kinds of things. So it's definitely an issue. I like that you had the two, the two areas I read here, as it relates to not only building homes, but also dealing with some revitalization. Because we have a lot of residents who maybe don't want to leave their home, but they just need some help fixing their roof, or replacing their windows, or replacing all electrical systems, you know, fixing plumbing. You know, we had the water crisis here in the community. And part, some plumbing on the outside was replaced, and then you had some plumbing inside the homes that may not have been replaced. My point is, the housing is a major issue. And, you know, I like to see us have a retreat, you know, just to talk about housing alone, because, you know, and this is an awesome start, and I'm supportive, I have more questions, but I'll digress. But it's such a large conversation, not just for us to have, but even to begin having with other municipalities in the community, to see what we can do as a county board, like projects like this, initiatives like this, to be able to provide them some resources, to leverage resources and relationships, to be able to do housing projects. I'll end by saying this for this part of our discussions. You know, we know, in my district particularly, you know, Central High School and Whittier High School, such an eyesore in that portion of the community. Not discounting eyesores throughout the community, but I'm using that as an example. Why? Because tipping zones matter. And although the cultural area is not yet a tipping zone, tipping zone, for years, has been defined as areas that could go either way. They could become, you know, terrible neighborhoods where it's hard to save them, or they can become better neighborhoods if we put the work in. Streets, sidewalks, housing repairs, revitalizations, and so on and so forth. But I've been talking to folks even about that property in the school board, to say, you know, that property, McKinley School, which is right outside of my district, but I used to go there. What if, like what you're talking about, we had condo developments there, where you had drive-up, you know, two- and three-bedroom townhouses, with two-car garages, and, you know, you can gate it in, and that provides options? Or what if we had walk-up Brookstone-style, Chicago-style townhouses, right, on the Whittier property? Go ahead.
Commissioner Lloyd, I was just gonna say that your recommendation about a workshop would be a great place to explore all of those kinds of ideas. I want to give some other commissioners a chance to ask questions to Mr. Bradshaw, if we could. Are there other questions or comments at this point?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so, so a request to wrap up would be more appropriate.
Okay.
Because I wasn't done, but I was almost done. So request to wrap up, I think is the most appropriate way for us to do that. So I'll wrap up, if that's okay with you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Versus ending my comments and moving on to the next speaker. We shouldn't do that. But my point was that, you know, the house, it's a, it's a major issue, and it's something that's brought up in community meetings throughout my district, that they would like to see us focus additionally on. So, you know, my question was going to be then, so, you know, about capacity. The question is about capacity. So even if we approve this, right, and even if we move this forward, which I'm supportive, I've read through the documents and stuff like that, I'm supportive, what is our capacity to be able to move forward a major initiative like this, with so much housing, financing, and so on and so forth?
So the capacity piece is a real issue. The capacity that we're gonna struggle with is not county capacity, it's going to be the work to get additional developers, and additional projects, and lining up the financing piece. So currently, right now, we have one or two nonprofit developers kind of in the area. And the pace that we've seen, and they're working hard, they got projects all over the place, but, you know, and I'll just use our, the Orchard Lane, that's been a two- or three-year process to get to that point, for the 45 units, right? So what this is, the goal with this is, how do we entice that pace to pick up? And let's put some money in there, and let's, so we have, we have a list of about 35 different developers, that we've got from our local units of government, other places in the state. Let's invite them in, let's talk about projects, like some of those school areas, that's came up in different conversations, so that, that we can really get that going. Because that, that is going to be our biggest challenge, from a capacity, is having the developers, it's not the person buying the house, it's gonna be the people building the house, and making sure they can line up with the right lenders, and the right financing piece. The goal with this is to really give that incentive, to provide that gap, so it makes that happen. Because a lot of times right now, housing that we're seeing, that are being built in Genesee County, are about 350 and up, right? We just gotta get that down, but we still have to build a quality house, you know, that looks nice, and it's gonna improve the value in that area. That's gonna, the capacity is an issue.
Yeah, and if I can just jump in real quick, I think the difference between what we're doing with this project, and what we maybe have done in the past, is we've waited for folks to come to us with ideas. And with this project, we're trying to be much more proactive in casting that broader net, so that more people are aware that this is an opportunity for them, and that we can help with that well-known local capacity issue.
I think Commissioner Wait, are you, Commissioner Lloyd?
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Wayhill was next, and then Commissioner Winfrey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Compliments to you and your team. They are a good group. I've been watching them, mostly related to the senior center renovations, but this is another great example of their professionalism and your leadership. If I'm remembering right, we did, we did have a study session that had multiple topics seven months ago, and this was one of them. Am I remembering that?
Early on.
Okay. But not an in-depth kind of thing that Commissioner Lloyd's referencing, which I think would be great. Tell me what the rollout's gonna look like, in terms of messaging to stakeholders who may want to participate in this? And I'm mostly thinking in terms of my city managers, my local electeds in my district, and how I might assist in making some of those connections, and getting the information to them.
So at the next full board meeting, with approval at the next full board meeting, the implementation will be the following Monday, right? So that's when the website goes live, the information goes out. So that, from a resident's standpoint, you know, that's when we're ready to go, and you'll be able to put those applications in, so from a resident's standpoint. So that would be the first thing I'd say, just from a resident's standpoint, just letting residents know in your community that there's a new program, and we have, you know, what the income limits are. The other piece, which is...
For the roofing side.
For the roofing side. For the development side, we have reached out at different times to local units of government, asking about if they had areas they were interested in, or if they have developers. So we reached out, like, do you have developers that you know in your community are working on projects? I think that would be the piece that I think, if a commissioner could send that message to that city manager, township supervisor, hey, there is this program out here, that has an opportunity to potentially fund partially of a project, so that we can then get in touch with them, or a local developer that's been working on projects. We've had communities say, we have projects that we're working on, right? We just don't have the money. But that would be the key, is sending it, like, send those people our way. We can, we can even, staff's more than happy to go out and sit down with any commissioner and a community group, or a township supervisor, city manager, and kind of walk through the process. Because I think the one thing that we like to stress in this, this is workforce housing, right? And if you look at those income ranges, right, there's, there's different pieces for different parts there. So it's, it's not a one-size-fits-all. So there'll be a piece in here that there is a homeless component, absolutely, right? Because it's needed. But there's also a piece for the higher incomes as well. So, you know, these, and our message is, when we say low-to-moderate, moderate income, right, we just want to make sure that message is, these are people, right, like, these are Genesee County employees, these are people that we want, right? We need them to have a part in our community.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, Commissioner Winfrey.
Yeah, thank you, Derek. I guess I'm more concerned about the management of the Roof Revitalization Program, and I understand that Habitat for Humanities will be managing that portion of it.
So 50/50. So in the city of Flint, it's a divide, you know, we can only have certain capacities. So in the city of Flint, Habitat's gonna manage that. We're overseeing the entire grant. Outside the city, it's going through our office.
Okay. So what is the, assuming that we passed this project, what is the anticipated...
So, what is the, assuming that we passed this project, what is the anticipated launch date for that program?
Be the Monday following the county board meeting. So that would be the 14th. This is a very aggressive program. Our goal, and the other thing that, and this is on the roof side, the need is immense. Roofing costs are extremely expensive today. A roof can be $16,000, it could be $24,000, like, pretty serious numbers. It could be $30,000. There's about 50 roofs in the city, and 50 roofs outside the city. So even though 2.8 million sounds like a lot, and it's a needed program, it's really going to be, and for us, we have a, it's an online system. You know, we're going to get you through, we're going to get you approved, and get you out to bid out for contractors very quickly.
So, I know that there, you know, and it's good that we're doing that, but I know there are a lot of other barriers related to roofing programs, like insurance, and-
Yes.
... et cetera. How are we going to tackle those barriers?
So, unfortunately or fortunately, with any of these programs, because they have federal and state dollars in the roofing side of them, they have to have house insurance, they have to pay their taxes. Those are two parts as part of the income qualification. Now, when somebody comes in, we're going to give them an opportunity, because we do, right? So if you come in and that's what you're missing, and you come into our program, we're going to tell you you're missing this, we're going to give you some time, right? We're going to say, hey, within this time period, if you can come back with this paperwork, we'll work with you. But ultimately, because of the funding sources on the roof side, those are ones that are outside of our control.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess there's, you know, it's a catch 22 kind of situation-
Right.
-for a lot of residents.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Ellenberg.
Yeah, I just have a question, because a lot of insurance companies, if their roof is already bad, they're not going to, they've already canceled their insurance. So if they have to have insurance to be able to qualify, and insurance people won't insure them because they have a bad roof, like you said, it's a catch 22. So, isn't that a catch 22? I always get those stuff. But, so how do you correct that?
So we currently, this, so part of this is some of the existing stuff we do right now. So we currently have ways that we deal with people that have insurance. It is common for us to get a person that gets a note from their insurance company that says, your roof is bad, we're going to cancel, we've canceled. So we can work with them and the insurance company on that. Insurance company, as long as they know it's getting fixed-
Okay.
-right? They're usually pretty good on that side. The other thing for us is, this allows us to go up to 120%. You know, we recently just had a person that just made a little bit more than one of our incomes, you know, it's, and so for us, it allows us to deal with just a few more people.
Thank you. Are there questions from any other commissioners? Commissioner Lloyd?
To you, because I know you haven't been, you know, asked questions yet.
I was just going to say that Derek made the same presentation yesterday morning at the Metropolitan Planning Commission, and that same question about the insurance came up as well, because we don't want to just get people in the houses and then only for them to lose the house because they can't pay their insurance, or we want to look at sustainability too. So that was something on the radar, but, you know, that aside, the proposal itself was overwhelmingly adopted and embraced. And so, I applaud Mr. Bradshaw and his whole team, and Josh as well, for attacking this problem, and attacking it aggressively, because it's been on our radar for quite a while. So, thank you for coming up with a solution.
Mr. Lloyd?
What about roofing repairs? I know, like, a lot of times when, you know, when they do certain money, that it doesn't, they don't allow you to do that. But I'm thinking, like, because it's only, it's a limited amount of roofs that can be fixed, you know, and the cost is so high, maybe one roof is $20,000, maybe we can do four houses, but repair and extend the life of roofs, or replace gutters for folks that-
So, in this, we really try and approach the roof as a system holistically-
Okay.
-because it doesn't make too sense to just do partial. So we can do gutters, we can do new sheeting, we can do soffits. So, because ultimately, that, if that roof is not weather tight, that causes so many other issues in the house, so.
Deb, did you want to say, I'm sorry?
Really, I don't want to change the subject, but I'm going to. I just wanted to say quickly that I appreciated what you said about Councilman Murphy, and a moment of silence, but also say that this, to me, is like a memory for him. He was dedicated to making sure that housing and neighborhoods in the city of Flint were taken care of, and he dedicated himself to it. I can remember, you guys may don't remember, except maybe Charles does, when I was a county commissioner, and Quincy used to come and talk to us at that time, a long time ago, about all of these issues. So, I just wanted to say thank you for remembering Quincy and looking at this, I look at this as like a good memorial for him. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for your report, Mr. Bradshaw. Not seeing any other comments, I think we are ready to move on to any old business?
No old business.
New business. We have Resolution 2024-1131, Approval of the Proposed Genesee County Housing Initiative.
Move it.
Support.
Any question and discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there any other business before the committee?
Nope.
Okay, we are adjourned-
6:05.
-at 6:05. It is 6:05, and I'd like to call this committee, the Finance Committee meeting, to order. Can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Lloyd?
Present.
Commissioner Winfrey?
Here.
Commissioner Ellenberg?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Avery?
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker?
Commissioner Kuzina?
Commissioner Wayhill?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Can we have approval of the minutes?
Move it.
It's been moved and supported. Question and discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there public comment to the committee? Any public comment to the committee? Final call for public comment to the committee? Seeing none, do we have any communications?
No communications.
Any old business?
Ma'am.
New business for the Finance Committee, we have Resolution 2024-1090, Forwarding to Receive and File a Copy of the Paid County Bills for the Weeks Ending 8/11/24 through 9/8/24, in the Amount of $26,734,353.60.
I'll move it.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any question and discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 2024-1124, Approval of a Purchase Order to Staples for the Fiscal Year Ending 2025, in an Amount Not to Exceed $354,795, to Provide for the Annual Purchase of Office Supplies. The Cost of this Purchase Order will be paid from the accounts listed.
I'll move it.
It's been moved and supported. Question and discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 2024-1127, Approval of a Purchase Order to Mailroom for the Fiscal Year Ending 2025, in an Amount Not to Exceed $252,115.50, to Provide for Mail Services for All County Departments. The Cost of this PO will be paid from the accounts listed.
Move it.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any question and discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 2024-1130, Approval of a Proposed Budget Amendment to 2024/2025 Appropriations Resolution for Various Line Items As Described in the Attached Budget Adjustment Request.
Move it.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any question and discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. 2024-1182, Approval to Provide Notice of Intent to Issue Bonds for Capital Improvements, and Giving Notice of Intent to Reimburse Project Expenditures with Bond Proceeds.
I'll move it.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Do we have question and discussion? Yes, Commissioner Ellenberg.
Yes, do we have any idea what the interest is going to be on these bonds?
Crystal, you're back there. I'm not sure that we've gotten an interest number back. Just a little bit of background on this number, you, well, not all of you maybe were here when we got the tower project approved. As part of that approval, there was an approval to go out and bond for $9 million for that project. So we're at the point now of the project where we're going to need that cash, and we were kind of delaying that process a little bit, in the hopes that interest rates would come down. Crystal will be able to speak to those interest rates, but I also wanted to tell you, some of those other items that are included in this request come from our capital improvement plan that was adopted by this board last year, I think it was. So that, dealing with things like the facade at the jail, and the Circuit Court Building, demolition and construction of some parking lots around the downtown area, and then also improvements at the jail, things like fixing shower issues over there, fire suppression system that is quickly reaching end of life, and then also a roof at the Circuit Court Building. So those are all, you know, our capital plan kind of come together, and then we've also included some funding for projects that Parks has included. So we're asking you for not to exceed an amount of-
$21,500,000.
$21,500,000. It may not be that much that we go out to ask for, but this is all of those plans coming together, to where we are at a point where we need some cash for them. But Crystal, do you have an understanding of what the interest rate is now?
Yes, the interest rate quoted is 4.3%. I did reach out to multiple banks to get a rate, only one bank responded. But I did reach out to PFM Financial, which helps us with our bonding, whenever, like, water and waste goes out to bid, and they, what I said, what would be a reasonable rate if you were to go out to market, and they said about 4.25%, just to get a feel for if we were getting charged the right rate.
And for how long is that bond for?
It would be a 20-year bond.
20-year bond. And are we having any bonds right now being termed?
We are, yeah. So she could explain that process.
Yeah, so we did, we did look at timing this, so for the first two years, it would be interest-only, like we did on the JJC bond. And at that point in time, we have, what is the name of that bond?
Energy Efficiency-
The Energy Efficiency Bond will fall off in 2026, when the principal payments come on for the new bond.
And then you could still look like the water, you know, like Jeff Wright did with the Water Department. If rates do start going down more, we can change it over?
Can always look to refinance.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Lloyd?
Just a matter of process on this, so this, is there approval for the notice of intent to issue the bonds? Does a resolution come back for us actually to issue them, or is this it?
It'll be to issue the bonds, yeah.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Wayhill?
Quick question for Josh. You ticked off some projects that are part of the capital improvement plan. The roof at McCree, not on the list right now.
No, we don't, ultimately, you know, we have some decisions to make around the McCree Building, so-
Right.
-we're holding off on that until we're further down the line. As you know, the district courts agreed to settle the lawsuit and to consolidate district court buildings into one location. So we're in discussions with them right now about what that looks like, and what their appropriate, what the appropriate space would be for them as we move forward. So until we have that discussion settled, we don't, we're not going to bring any proposals to spend any further on McCree.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, it sounds like we're ready for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. In terms of other business, I just want to remind everybody about our broadband initiative and the survey. We had several copies of this little card made with the QR code on the back, so that residents, you can pass these out to your residents or groups that you speak to in the community, and please don't forget to ask them to take this quick five-minute survey, it's even less than five minutes in a lot of instances. So if you can take this survey, the more data we get, the better chances we will have of applying for grants, so. All right.
Commissioner Lloyd, I'll follow up with the attorney, just to be sure of that question, but I'm pretty sure of that question.
Thank you.
Okay. We are adjourned at 6:13.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Present.
Commissioner Winfrey? Stepped out. Commissioner Ellenberg?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Avery?
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker?
Commissioner Kuzina?
Commissioner Wayhill?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
All right, thank you, Mr. Freeman. We have approval of the minutes from September 11th. Is there a motion?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, is there discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. We are now on to public comment to this committee. Do we have public comment? Any public comment to Government Operations? One last time, public comment. Public comment is closed. Under Communications, we have the Opioid Executive Committee Update, and I see Marlene is here. I'm assuming for this very reason, so please introduce yourself and proceed.
Well, thank you, Chair. And Anna, welcome to the United States of America, for sure, for you, 100%. I am Marlene Cocke, I'm Deputy Director of Community Corrections, and I'm representing the committee here. I do have a major goal, there might be a couple more representatives out in that audience of ours, but why are we here? You guys challenged our committee, you did, and we took that challenge to our heart, and we matched with our MSU partners, and we've had study sessions with you guys, and I am pretty proud to announce that they've been in the streets for the last few days. They have visited numerous vendors, and I'm not going to steal their thunder, and interviewed persons with experiences, families that have unfortunately lost, individuals of substance use disorder. And so I feel, today, we went prevention, so youth is on that list, and I want to thank Derek, because it was divine timing, your presentation. So I stand here humbled, because we came with some great core remediation suggestions, and when you guys challenged us, we were pretty confident, and just listening the last few days, even I am going to begin to challenge myself after this, to get more data numbers, specifically for our youth, and what I've identified thus far, just hearing from representatives, that individuals are just going above and beyond at their organizations, of what they're even payable for. And examples, let me give you some visual heartfelt examples. Yesterday, we saw, well, we didn't get on into the house, but it's a male housing unit with children. You guys, there's not one. That's evidence best practice being built right in our county, and they're just doing it. And housing for families, and I'm talking about substance use disorder individuals that get funding through recovery housing, and it's only a limited time, and there's not a step-down process, and so what we're identifying is, individuals are just being let go. And so that continuity of care, and identifying it, and this housing, the transitional portion from moving to there, to some safe, affordable housing, you know, the vets, I commend Catholic Charities, and we'll be meeting with Katie tomorrow, and so that is also a project I'm going to learn intently, and how it got funded. I hope, you know, in the future, we can assist our individuals in the recovery community. Childcare, these are items that me, as a person who lived and experienced, didn't have 22 years ago. I didn't have children when I got clean, right? And so these are items where people second and third shift jobs, that's their type of work, and we're not able to really truly accommodate. And as I've indicated, these landlords are watching their children, we don't have these options, and it's, we really need to look at some items, and so we've challenged ourselves. I'm really excited to even just get the qualitative report, and I'm just going to have Dr. and major and her colleagues just speak to you guys, and let me know. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today, I appreciate you guys.
Good evening, everyone. So I'd like to invite you-
Will you introduce yourself for us?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. My name is Dr. Barnes Nager. I work at Michigan State University in University Outreach and Engagement. I'm a part of the Technical Assistance Collaborative that's funded through MDHHS. And we partner or collaborate with our partners at Wayne State University and University of Michigan to provide supports to counties as they've received these settlement funds to better plan for how those funds are being used. Our support at MSU focuses on hearing from residents. So we plan community assessment processes where we go out and we talk to residents and hear from them. We also use surveys to hear from residents. In Genesee County, when we heard from Marlene and worked with her committee, it became clear that what we really needed to do first was to gather some qualitative information. There are a lot of data already in existence in Genesee County that demonstrate the needs that are here, as well as some of the strengths, the amazing providers that are already in existence in the community. But what we didn't know and couldn't understand were where were the barriers that people were experiencing to be able to access those services. So that's what we've been doing this week, is talking with people, doing interviews and focus groups. We've been in the jail. We have been in recovery housing, as Marlene mentioned. We've been in shelter. We've been all over the place the past three days, and we'll be back out again tomorrow. And then we'll have another opportunity to come out in November to hear from others. And it is very clear that, you know, some of these needs are all connected, as we know, right? Housing, basic needs, making sure that we can meet the individual where they're at and provide people with truly empathetic care and treat people as human beings. And so that's what we're doing. We're documenting all this information. We'll have a report ready to share with you all in January. The report will be ready in January. If you would like for us to come and present our information to you in January or February, we'll be happy to do that. And then if you all have questions, we'll be happy to take them.
Commissioners? Questions? Comments? Well, I'll make a comment. So I recently was contacted by a doctor who has his practice in my district, and I think he'd already been in touch with Marlene about this issue. And I'm not sure how we solve it, but I'll just mention that for him, transportation for his patients, and this is a methadone clinic. And I went and visited, took me on the tour, and we learned, I asked a lot of questions. So he's got maybe 150 patients who are daily, need to go there every single day to get methadone or some other, it's methadone and several other type things. And about half of them have reliable, regular transportation to go there each day. There's 70 or 80 of them that do not. And of course, the 70 or 80 that do not have a higher likelihood of falling away and not being able to get there, get what they need so they can stay in recovery mode, right? And so that's just one clinic, and there are others around the county. And I'm sure, you know, even beyond that, there are transportation issues. So that particular piece of the puzzle has now been brought front and center for me. So I'll be curious to see what you all, how you all share that issue and any recommendations in the report.
Yeah, definitely. We have been to that clinic also. And we also have heard, not just from that clinic, but from the other places that we've been at, the importance of transportation. There was even an individual who was a client, a patient at that clinic, who shared that she generally does have transportation, but in one of the medications that she receives every other day, she cannot drive herself home. And so, you know, if she can get a ride there, she thought, oh, I can get a ride there. But then when she couldn't get a ride back home, she had to pay $35 for an Uber ride home. So if she's having to do that every other day, who can afford, you know, $70 per trip if she's having to do that every other day, right? So transportation, even, and she's one of those clients who would be on the list as having transportation.
Right.
So for sure, it's a big issue.
All right. Any other comments, questions? Dr. Brown?
I would just say that I had an opportunity to sit in on one of the webinars for the opioid update, I think it was, through Michigan State University. And I appreciated the level of rigor with this study and what you guys are gathering, and I appreciate the collaboration. I have bragged about your, our executive team for opioid, opioid project at a couple of meetings I've been at. So I just want to thank you for the work, your ongoing work.
Oh, thank you very much. We've worked with over 30 counties across the state so far in just the past year and a half that we've been doing this. And it's been a pleasure working with Genesee County. It's been really great. You do have a great task force.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marlene. We appreciate all members of the executive committee. I said it once before, but you all have a lot of passion around this topic, and it comes through in your work. So thank you. It doesn't appear that we have any old business before us, so new business? Resolution 2024-1046, approval of a grant award from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $206,250 for the purpose of providing prepetition and post-adjudication ancillary legal services in child protective proceedings. The budget for this grant is attached.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution 2024-1047, approval of a contract between Genesee County and Global Vision Technology for Fam Care Software Maintenance and Hosting for the period commencing October 1st, 2023 through September 30, 2025, in the amount of $45,000 each fiscal year for a total of $90,000 to be paid from the account listed.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution 2024-1057, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and ESRI in an amount not to exceed $40,754 to provide for annual software maintenance. The cost of this agreement will be paid from account, the counts listed.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution 2024-1058, approval of a grant award from the Michigan State Police in the amount of $1,095,166.80 to provide for investigating and prosecuting cases involving automobile theft and related offenses. There is a match requirement of $108,009. The budget for this grant is attached.
Move it. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution 2024-1087, approval of a grant award from the Michigan State Police in the amount of $133,417.20 to provide for investigating and prosecuting cases involving automobile theft and related offenses. There is a match requirement of $88,944.80. The budget for this grant is attached.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion? Commissioner Brown?
I just have one question regarding both of these resolutions. Will part of the grant be, or what part of the grant, if any, will be allowed for administrative expenses?
I can only speak, I think the first one is for the sheriff's office. The second one is for the prosecutor's office, and there are no costs for administrative duties. It's for four prosecutors, assistant prosecutors, and two secretaries. 25% of each prosecutor's salary infringes, and 25% of each secretary is covered by this grant.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you, John. Resolution 2024-1104, approval of a grant award from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in the amount of $15,000 to provide for supervised parenting time and exchanges. The budget for this grant is attached.
Move it. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution 2024-1126, approval of a purchase order to Warner Norcross and Judd LLP for the fiscal year ending 2025 in an amount not to exceed $78,000 to provide lobbying services at the state and federal level. The cost of this purchase order will be paid from the account listed.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion? All those, Commissioner Ellenberg?
Is this the same lobbying firm that we used before? And was it fairly successful?
Yeah, I believe it was, yeah.
Enough to pay for itself?
Several times over.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it might be worthwhile for the public to hear some dollar amounts. So we spend $78,000 on a lobbyist. What's the return look like?
Yeah, we got $3 million to help with the prosecutors, the biggest one that we had. But also just having access to legislators, legislators, especially after your legislation that's harmful to Genesee County. It's nice to have somebody that's got those connections, that you can connect with them immediately to advocate on our behalf. And we've been semi-successful in doing that. Not semi, we've been successful in doing that.
Is the three million for the prosecutor, that's going to be repeated, we think?
Yes.
It has been. Or it will be.
It was included again in this year's budget.
So it's really 6 million? Okay. Thank you, Josh. Commissioner Ellenberg?
So if it, say like if there's an issue right now, we're going into, so when it goes to the Senate, they'll still be lobbying, lobbying for us for, to move in our direction?
Yeah, on the road commission piece?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. And actually, because of those efforts, Commissioner Avery and I had a meeting with Senator Cherry and trying to work out a solution on that particular issue, yeah.
Okay. All right.
And that is a direct result of the work that our lobbyist was doing.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution 2024-1128, approval of a grant award from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $2 million to provide for Genesee County's adult felony recovery and veterans treatment court programs. The term of this grant is from October 1, 2024 through September 30, 2029.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion?
I have a question. What is felony recovery?
The problem, Rhonda, I'm, I'm the Family Division Administrator for the Circuit Court. Welcome to the United States. If you have any interest in the court, Commissioner Wayhill, you can contact me. I'm happy to spend time with you over at the court if you have any interest, so. So the problem-solving courts in the Circuit Court, the Adult Recovery Court, typically those are people who have committed felonies due to substance abuse issues, alcohol, substance abuse issues. So they will often get reduced charges if they go through the program and successfully complete. So that's what those typically are.
Oh, yeah. That's excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional comments or questions? All right. Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution 2024-1132, approval of a grant award from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $309,999 to provide for Genesee County's Stop Violence Against Women efforts for fiscal year ending 2025. There is a 25% match requirement for this grant.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. I'm going to allow the gentle lady from Armenia to read the last resolution for your pleasure.
Resolution 2024-1133, approval of a grant award from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $334,125 to provide staffing for Genesee County's Elder Abuse Task Force. The budget for this grant is attached.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion? I'm a little worried I'm going to be out of a job now if she runs in the 8th District. All right. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Do we have any other business? No other business? This committee is adjourned at 6:33.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Present.
Commissioner Winfrey?
Here.
Commissioner Ellenberg?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Avery?
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker? Commissioner Kuzina? Commissioner Wayhill?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Chair, we entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved. Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any questions? Comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries. Are there any public comments to this committee? Any public comments to this committee? Any public comments to this committee? Public comments are closed. Any communications?
No, sir.
Old business. New business? Resolution 24-1125, approval of an increase in the agreement between Genesee County and Valley Area Agency on Aging in an amount not to exceed $81,000 to provide intake assessment and home deliberate meal assessments. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the following account.
So moved. Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, just for clarification, is the increase 81,000 or is the total contract 81,000?
The increase, I believe, is 81,000. Lynn, you want to speak to that?
Good evening, Commissioners. Through the chair to you, Dr. Brown. So this is a position that had been previously funded with COVID monies and ARPA dollars through Valley. And that money, since the emergency declaration has ceased, they now need to cover this position. And this is a case management-type position that will do all the assessments and reassessments of the senior millage clients receiving home-delivered meals. And they have to have these assessments done within six months to make sure nothing's changed. And documentation also needs to be sent to the state for matching funds. So this is an additional 81,000 to their current amount.
And the position didn't, didn't, or it did or did not exist before COVID?
It existed. It was just covered, they used different monies. And now that money is no longer there, but we still need this position for not only Valley, but for G Card and for home-delivered meal clients.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn. Any further questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries. Resolution 24-1134, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and the Michigan Department of Education to provide for the Emergency Food Assistance Program for fiscal year 2025.
Move it. Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries. Resolution 24-1135, approval of a grant award from the U.S. Department of Health and Human award from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, allowing for a grant consolidation of early head start services.
So moved.
Expansion for 2024, 2025. Any support?
Support.
It's properly moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Eyes have it, motion carries. Resolution 24-1136, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and the Michigan Department of Education to provide for the Commodity Supplemental Food Program for fiscal year ending 25.
So moved.
Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Eyes have it, motion carries. Resolution 24-1156, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and the Board of Trustees of Michigan State University to provide for MSU Extension Services in fiscal year 2025. Properly moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Eyes have it, motion carries. There's no further business before this committee. It stands adjourned.
Call this meeting to order a Public Works Committee. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Present.
Commissioner Winfrey?
Here.
Commissioner Ellenberg?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Avery?
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker?
Commissioner Kuzina?
Commissioner Wayhill?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Can I have approval of the minutes?
So moved.
September 11. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion or changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Any public comment to the board? Any public comment? Third time, any public comment? Seeing none, public comments closed. Any communications?
No, ma'am.
Old business, new business, Resolution 2024-923, approval of the Genesee County Parks and Recreation Marketing Plan for fiscal year 2025.
I move it.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
I have discussion through you.
Yes.
Madam Chair, to Josh Freeman. So I know that at some point, we're going to be having some discussion about marketing plans for the parks and how that's going to be funded. And so, without exhausting that tonight, just curious, does this impact that? Because we have not debated that as a board yet.
That's separate.
Okay, thank you.
And we do have our director here. I'm sure if he's set up any dates.
Oh, I'll say. Thank you.
All right. And move it?
Yep.
It's been moved and seconded. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Resolution 2024-1084, approval of an annual purchase order of burger Chevrolet for the purchase of vehicles for various departments for the ending year of 2025.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
There is, Commissioner Shoemaker did have a question, or probably will have further discussion at the full board meeting, but in the past, the board has passed a resolution that says they would only buy GM vehicles made in America. On that list are some Equinox vehicles that I believe are made in Canada. So I know that that will be an issue, and we're researching that to be sure that the resolution is, was written correctly based on the discussion. So just letting you know that that discussion will probably be coming next week, and that there are three, I believe there's three electric vehicles that we're going to do a test, test program with in the sheriff's office. General Motors has some electric Blazers, and the sheriff has some uses for those that are not high mileage, our SRO officers. So we wanted to test pilot that. So just so you know that that'll be an issue likely for next week.
Has it been moved and supported? Any other discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Resolution 2024-1097, approval of a grant award from the Michigan State Police in the amount of $39,985 to provide for the purchase of a pontoon boat at Genesee County Parks and Recreation Commission.
Move it. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions? I have a question. Where, where would this be placed at?
So this is the patrol boat that will be stationed at Mott Lake, and per the grant, it's only to be used for law enforcement, so.
That's what I wanted to know, because a lot of our boats go like to the southern part of the county.
Yeah. Yeah, so the pontoon traditionally stays on Mott Lake, and then the other patrol boat will hit Holloway and Bule Lake.
Good. All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Resolution 2024-1101, approval of a grant award from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in the amount of $850,000 to support parks projects in the city of Schwartz Creek, Monday Township, and Grambling Township.
Support.
Any, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion on this?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think this is the grant that I had conversation with Nate Henry, Schwartz Creek City Councilman, about months ago, and he just wanted me to watch it and make sure, I think that it was going to be split evenly among the three jurisdictions. And I looked in Legistar, but I couldn't figure that out. Is it?
Patrick can speak to it.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, so this was a discussion that we had with each municipality on how to do it. I think everybody totaling asked for like over $3 million. So as a collective group, between the three municipalities and us, who is the pass-through agency, we settled on a even split. So $233,333.33.
A 3.3, or 1.30 each, is that what you said?
Yeah, 2.33 each.
Okay, thank you. I'm losing my hearing, Patrick. I'm getting old, so thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other discussion? And Nate Henry did contact me and was very excited about building a pavilion in honor of one of the, a big volunteer that was from Schwartz Creek that passed away, and they're going to name it after him. So, anyway, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Resolution 2024-1108, approval of a grant award from the U.S. Department of Interior in the amount of $150,000 to provide for the Flint River Restoration Project.
So, so moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Mr. Lloyd?
I know, I know we've had like some presentations. I know part of the Flint River Restoration Project is like the removal of the dams and that kind of thing. Is this additional resources to kind of support maybe that, or is it something?
Yeah, so this is for the in-river work specifically, so the riffles that are being made. So right now, we have the two done that are down in the playground block, which is Grand Travers North. We've got the one in the amphitheater done. We're currently working on the one and removing the Hamilton Dam, and then we'll be moving up to the two in Vietnam Vet. So this will just help release funding for the upland work later, which will be the park improvements.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Resolution 2024-1116, approval of a request by Genesee County Parks Recreation Commission to amend the professional services contract with Wilkinson Solutions to extend the contract from one additional year in the amount not to exceed $35,000.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Resolution 2024-1121, approval of a discharge of declaration of restrictive covenant on, on lake, or a vacant parcel.
Move it.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
So I looked at this and didn't quite understand what it was all about. It involves G Card?
It does, yeah. G Card, about four or five directors ago, had purchased a, parcels in the city of Flint with the hopes that they were going to do a project with HUD. As part of that, they put a restrictive covenant on it that said, should this property ever be used for anything else, that HUD would be reimbursed for those dollars. The project never happened, and the property has sat vacant for many years. There is a resident right next door, I think this is on Yale. There's a neighbor who would like to purchase it, but because we had this restricted covenant on it, we kind of had put it off. So, working with Corporation Counsel, this is removing that restricted covenant so that there, it's just free and clear, and then we'll take that vacant parcel and sell it to the neighbor.
Right, thank you. Thanks, Madam Chair.
And so who do, who handles the price of the vacant property after it's cleared?
It'll be owned by the county, and we'll work with.
A real estate?
Yeah, it's a city lot, so it's not, likely won't be with a realtor. We'll just handle it in-house.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Any other business?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to, the record to reflect that we just completed five committee meetings in an hour and 15 minutes, roughly. So I just want to say that for the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting's adjourned at?
6:47.
6:47.